Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. I'd like to call the general town meeting of Swink to order. Would you all go ahead and give the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Chris Moran.
Here.
Raymond Gonzalez.
Here.
Matt Kruger.
Here.
Robin Platt. Tina Frecker.
Here.
Amy Place.
Here.
Ripdale.
Here.
Philip Maloff. Carlos Magdalena.
Here.
Amanda Holland.
Here.
Thank you. Next items will be the consensus items that we received in our email package. Can I have a motion to accept those, please?
I make a motion that we pass the consensus items over email to us for review.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Tina and a second by Matt to pass the consensus items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Let's move to audience participation. Mr. Autumn, you are up. Pete.
Thank you. We're very happy to be here and very happy to be part of your community now. And we thank for your town employees for working with us and that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
So can you state to me what you're asking of us here, please? Just to refresh those that aren't maybe up to speed.
We'd like to put a shed on the southwest corner of our property. The shed would be the size of seven by 14.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, it doesn't meet the setback, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dell.
It doesn't meet the setback requirements?
Uh, that is correct.
Have you gone through the variance committee to present that to them?
Uh, I, being a newbie here, I would say I need to know what I need to do.
Well, that would be the first step. Because we don't make the rules. We have a board that does that.
Okay.
If you can't meet the setbacks, then you go to them and you apply for variance.
I'm not even sure what the rules are in relationship to the setback.
So, those were the ones that I gave you? The ones, the rule, the setbacks that I printed off for you? The 10 feet and the 25 feet and all that stuff? Did I give you the ordinances?
No.
Well, we did know that the six foot on each side was where it was at. And I think the reason why we're here and we didn't go through that is because he was wondering why he even has to go through this because everybody else's is the same. That's why we've been here, or else we would have done that step and we would have went through that step. But...
I thought that was a process.
Well, it is a process, but then if you have someone who's upset because all the other houses look the same, shouldn't they come here and at least talk about it? To see if we should go that way at the wake? Because we can still go through that. I mean, that is a process.
Now, I would be happy to go through your rule or through your committee and that kind of stuff. No problem. Uh, I'm not unhappy that there are people that obviously got a variance or something along that line. I don't mind. I mean, it's something we can do. I don't even know when this board meets or where it meets.
They usually just meet on demand. It's not a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Because there's not people that do construction very often. So, whenever something comes up and something doesn't meet the blueprint of where it's supposed to be.
Be very happy to meet with that committee.
Land that can get you that.
So, that's the whole part? That's the processes that I told you about after the zoning that you won't make it? Then you have to do the zoning application where then you go to the... Which, I mean, it takes a couple of months. That's the one I told you was a lot longer. If you just met the setbacks, then it's just simple. But if you don't, then it's a little longer process.
Okay.
But I wanted us to come here first because of the everybody else was the same and we would have liked to be the same. That's why we started here.
Okay. Will you be in touch with us then when we meet?
You can just come in. You'll have to fill out this form and you'll have to date it for... If you come in tomorrow. So, I'll give you a new form.
Okay.
And then we'll start the whole process. Because we won't be able to go back on 10/13. So, we'll just start a new whole form and I'll just have you fill out the whole thing and then we'll just start that process.
Under old business, we actually have some things to share.
So, today, I was talking to Dana who is from GMS. And she's... SCED has been helping us, if you guys remember Lisa. And then GMS was helping us. And then Lisa was not an employee there anymore. So, Leslie stepped in. Well, Leslie... And Leslie is no longer an employee there. So, we don't have anybody helping us with SCED anymore. Um, so we're relying back on GMS. And it's going to cost more money. Um, but there's things that have to be done monthly with everything that GMS does that SCED was going to do. But I'm not sure... She wasn't sure that the executive... Because they got to send me to some executive council, whoever was above those ladies. And...
We're down behind schedule because we already have the loan established. We've already made payments towards the loan. Even though it's not going to be a process that's going to get handled until probably spring or summer of next year. But because those draws were not getting done, some of this stuff runs with the deadline. Like, if you guys remember, we got the $10,000 grant for planning. It expired one year after that process, which was October 1st. Now, they have given us 60 days to use that money. So, what we have to do, I think GMS is going to take over because they're tired, kind of like we are, tired of getting the runaround. They want... They do this all the time and we kind of went with SCED because they...
Same as money, really?
They promised certain things, but they've yet to deliver on any of those. So, we're going to have to go with GMS. And they actually have a request for reimbursement thing here. They're going to actually put the under contract, the $10,000 that we would lose in 60 days. So, we don't lose it. They'll use that as their first draw. But we are going to have to pass... We're going to have to pass some, uh, a motion that giving them permission to do so. And then we'll have to obviously give that to them in writing. So, at the moment, it's not going to cost anything extra. But if we don't do this, we're going to lose the $10,000 grant that we got for planning and bearing.
Planning assessment.
Right. So, I mean, to go forward on the process, we're going to have to either find somebody at SCED that is willing to do the work that GMS does all the time or we just need to hand the reins over to GMS and let them get started.
So, to clarify, we either need a motion for GMS to take over so we don't lose $10,000. If we keep trying to work with and find someone via SCED, we're going to lose the $10,000 and maybe save whatever couple thousand we were trying to avoid with GMS.
Correct.
Is that a recap?
That's a very good assessment, yes. I mean, if it costs us $7,000 more for GMS to do this, but...
Correctly.
They're going to get the 10. And we're still saving three, so...
Yeah.
And it'll be done correctly.
So, I motion we move forward with GMS in the water tower project and grant them permission to pull the $10,000 grant money so we do not lose it December 1st, 2025.
A second.
I have a motion by Robin and a second by Tina to accept the proposal from GMS to use the $10,000 as the first draft and proceed forward with the water tower project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item of old business here is the granted property and the ordinances, which I believe everything is taken care of, correct?
Yes.
We just have to pass the ordinance under resolution.
Carlos, find the...
The water lane? Yeah, it's more north or to the east or west side. Yeah.
So, this is ordinance number 2025-2. This is an ordinance vacating a portion of Reynolds Street in Swink, Otero County, Colorado, as shown by the recorded plat thereof. Whereas the town is desirous of vacating a portion of Reynolds Street lying north of the intersection of Reynolds Street and First Street in the town of Swink in the state of Colorado as it now exists. Whereas the Swink Planning and Zoning Board previously recommended that the petition to vacate a portion of Reynolds Street be approved. Now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Swink. All that part of Reynolds Street lying north of the intersection of Reynolds Street and First Street in the Town of Swink, County of Otero, State of Colorado, is hereby vacated. The town reserves an easement and right-of-way across the above described land for any future town or its assigns of utility services. Said easement and right-of-way shall include the right to maintain and construct utility lines throughout any easement and right-of-way. A copy of this ordinance shall be recorded on the records of Otero County, Colorado. So, I will need a motion to accept ordinance number 2025-2, please.
I motion we pass ordinance 20 dash... Or 2025-2, resolution 2025-2.
A second.
I have a motion by Robin and a second by Tina to accept ordinance number 2025-2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So now we have to pass the resolution for that same thing, resolution 2025-2. Whereas Karen Grannard has petition for the vacation of all that part of Reynolds Street lying north of the intersection of Reynolds Street and First Street in the Town of Swink, County of Otero, State of Colorado. And whereas notice was given in accordance with requirements of the municipal code of the Town of Swink. And whereas a public hearing was held on November 19th, 2025 concerning the same. And whereas the Swink Planning and Zoning Board has determined that the petition should be approved and that the same should be forwarded to the Town Council for its review and approval. Be it therefore resolved as follows. The Swink Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval of the request for vacation of all of that part of Reynolds Street lying north of the intersection of Reynolds Street and First Street in the Town of Swink, County of Otero, State of Colorado. That the Swink Planning and Zoning Board recommends that the town reserves an easement and right-of-way across each vacated parcel for all existing utility services and for any future town or its assigns of utility services. Said easement and right-of-way shall include the right to maintain and construct utility lines through the easement and right-of-way. I will entertain a motion to accept resolution 2025-2.
I motion we pass resolution 2025-2.
A second.
I have a motion by Robin and a second by Tina to pass resolution 2025-2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, let's move to Rec Committee Boards, CML reports. Nothing to report for CML that I'm aware of. How about a rec report?
Sure. Uh, football and volleyball are over. We're on to basketball. We will... We did sign up the K through two basketball. That is usually, it's in Rocky Ford on Mondays. However, we've added a couple Saturdays. Three out of our four teams have decided that they will play in Los Animas as well. We're having McClave in Los Animas in the K through two basketball as well. So, adding another couple teams. Um, the shirts have been ordered. Coaches are giving their rosters. I had two come in extra and I put them on. They might get a shirt because there was some extra ones at Graphic Designs. Um, so, we have four teams. So, that's good. And then, if you guys all see, I ordered some baseball stuff with our grant. Um, this one's for the littler ones, that one's for the bigger ones. And then I've got some adult ones coming, one for our catchers. Um, our, my alms. Because we usually use the Swink Lions baseball teams stuff. So, now we have our own. Um, and then, um, after seeing what football numbers we had this year and just listening to things, I think I'm going to go with third and fourth grade football to be flag. Um, and since we have this grant money, I'm able to get all the equipment for it. And if I wait till next year, we may not have money to get other equipment. We'll at least be able to play Fowler and Crowley unless Rocky Ford, I talked to the director there and they're going to talk about it because their numbers were low too. So, maybe if we go, everybody will just follow right in and we'll have flag football, but we'll still play tackle fifth and sixth. Unless for some reason the state decides that they don't want kids tackling until junior high. Which that's being...
Talking about be discussed, yes.
Mm-hmm. So, um, but right now, that's really all I have.
Rec. Thank you. All right, let's move to new business now. And number one will be Arkansas Valley Hospice and Proclamation. Do you ladies have something you would like to say?
We just want to say thank you for your support. Um, Swink's always been great to support us, the people. We are your only local hospice. We... All the money that we gather through donations or from patient care stays in our community. It doesn't leave our community. So, um, we've been here since 1985 and we continue to stay around. And our team is wonderful. We have a great team. I have Catherine Ramirez, my administrative assistant, and Amber Covington, who is now a new MP. So, she is going to head up our palliative program. So, that will start back up and we'll get that going. So, we appreciate your help.
Thank you, guys, too.
Thank you as well. Assuming you got me to review this, right?
Yes. We've shortened it.
You did shorten it, I noticed. All right, this is the city of Swink proclamation for the hospice and palliative care month of 2025. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated is dedicated to providing compassionate, patient-centered care that supports the mind, body, and spirit while educating the community about end-of-life care. Whereas hospice and palliative care honor the dignity of every individual, ensuring comfort, respect, and support for patients and their families. Whereas Arkansas Valley Hospice Incorporated serves Swink and surrounding communities through a devoted team of professionals and volunteers who address physical, emotional, and spiritual needs. Whereas this care is made possible through community generosity, allowing services to be provided locally and without charge. Now therefore, I, Chris Moran, Mayor of Swink, do hereby proclaim November 25 as Hospice and Palliative Care Month of Swink, Colorado, and encourage all citizens to learn more about hospice and the vital comfort, compassion, and hope it provides. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Swink to be affixed this day, uh, 19th day of November, 2025. Yeah, I... Yeah, we probably should have a motion to...
I motion we accept proclamation of Arkansas Valley Hospice for November. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Robin and a second by Tina to accept the proclamation of November as palliative hospice and palliative care month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
May we get a picture with you?
Sure.
You guys need to take that with you, Mom?
What's that?
Yeah.
This paper?
Yes.
We'll share responsibility here.
One, two, three. I'll take one this time.
Thank you. All right, the next item of new business.
We only have one that's pretty far out. And the trash is... It's an eight-mile round trip there and back from the dump off of Road Z out there. And it's a dirt road, the only dirt road to take to get out there. If not, you drive all the way down to 71 and then drive another 10, 15 miles that way. Almost by 3:50, which is a far drive. I mean, and every other week, sometimes every two weeks, they have trash, so...
How did we get that going that far out? They just come and ask for it and we just did it?
I... At that time, I wasn't involved with none of that. It was passed.
How long have they been at?
For about...
I think Cord's the one who... He talked to Cord and then Cord.
So, it's been a couple years, a year?
Yeah, at least.
It's been at least a year.
At least a solid year.
And it's not on the way to the dump to grab it on the way?
Oh, no.
I don't know.
But I think when they first decided it, I don't think anybody here realized how far.
Not even...
Because his first house right here is just right here. But then you have to like... I don't think that they realized... Because even after that, or even like...
I mean, and to drive that dirt road in the winter and with the full truck, I mean, regardless if it's empty, you know, then it's light, the back ends light, you're sliding all over the place.
I would think we put them on notice and say, well, we're terminating our service January 1st. That'd give them a couple of months to get somebody else to do it. But that's too far out of the way. We shouldn't...
Out of our jurisdiction, especially with the cost of fuel and all. It's a, that's a drive.
The only... When we started doing out of city limits was on the way to the dump when we pick up people on the way. Now, if it was outside of that boundary, then we didn't do it. It's expanded since. You've got lazy acres now. Picked up the churches. It's kind of in the way.
It follows throughout the route where we need to go.
But that's way out of the way.
Yeah. No, I agree.
It's not beneficial for us. I mean, it's wearing tear on our truck. Like you say, the winter time is just not worth it.
Yeah, I know how many easier they can get stuck, those dump trucks. Happen to Rocky all the time.
We... Especially heavy rains, snows out there. We get stuck almost every time we go out.
And I just put them on notice and we're...
Just send out the letter and just...
Yeah.
As of January 1st? Okay.
That's just my recommendation, my word.
I agree.
I agree too.
Yeah.
All in agreeance.
Just changing our boundaries.
We're going to make a motion.
No motion for that one.
I wouldn't think so. It's just, it's city business.
But other than that, everyone else... They stay pretty much within our route where we need to go and where we're headed, so...
Okay, let's move on to C under new business here, which would be the text to my gov. This was what you researched, you said, for like getting information out to the community?
Yes, to where I could send out information, like this break that we just had. 300-plus calls. We could have sent out an easy text and everybody would have known it wasn't their toilet or their house. Like, yes, does it not hap... It doesn't happen that often, no. But we also have like Thanksgiving week. Trash is getting so messed up that week because it's Thursday, Friday, they're off. Well, Wednesday's a half a day. So, we're going to try to move around trash days, you know? But then trying to let everybody know what days we're going to do it. So, I'm going to put it on of our... Huh?
So, the cost of this service is, uh...
And they gave us, you'll see that too.
$1,500 annually with a $500 implementation setup fee. So, it'd be $2,000 for the first year and $1,500 after that. Now, my suggestion would be the Facebook page, which is definitely going to meet and greet pros and cons. I know LaHanta has, uh, LaHunt, City of LaHanta, public notices. All they do is put out information out there. I would agree that after the water breaks, everybody was concerned. We had calls, people confused. I put it on my personal page and things like that. But it doesn't get out near as fast as it would if we had essentially located probably something that we could turn the commenting off of because we don't...
That's what I do on my rec.
We do not want a... It's not a word-of-mouth page. It will just be for public information, the water.
Like nobody can comment on my rec?
Trash structure that'd be, you know, we're going to run tomorrow instead of today because we're broke down, things like that, so...
Kind of like how I do the rec?
Yes.
Where I'll put stuff on there, but then I turn the comments off. It's going to leave the comment, but people can still share.
Right, just a Facebook page for information. That would be my suggestion. I don't know what you guys want to do. We...
It'd be cheaper than that.
I would call it Swink, well, the goat's.
It's free. It is free.
Yeah, I think the Facebook...
And I won't mind doing that, but I don't want no Facebook where everybody will comment and I'm not running it. No. Like, I don't want to run...
I don't mind setting it up and...
Seaco News does sell public notices to other municipalities and government agencies for a very affordable price. I'd be willing to talk to you guys about being able to put them in like my alert system. I could promote Swink residents to follow it. They'd get a notification.
Right. Yeah, that's after this last water break, I think it'd certainly be beneficial to have an outlet post there that everybody could... I mean...
So, do you need anything from us to set up a Facebook? Because you've already done it for the rec. So, you're pretty familiar. You're... And only put what affects the city, public notices.
Right, correct.
Anything that's...
And then maybe I'll just add like me and the mayor as like admins. Or does everybody want to be admin?
No, thank you. No need for all of us. Because we're not, we don't know the business that goes down daily, right? You're going to know if the trash truck is broke today.
Oh, no, before any of you, basically.
Yeah, you're going to know if there's a water break.
Actually, Carlos will know first.
Just keep it safe to the point.
I walk around and check it before I reuse.
And then just be up to ask to get it out there. And like, maybe you can print a little notice on our wa... On the water bill. Hey, check out the new Facebook.
Well, but you don't have a lot of room on the water bill. That's why you just see that little tiny...
Word-of-mouth on Facebook, I think, will travel fast enough. I think it'll, it'll get out there.
It'll get shared.
Especially once somebody sees it, it's like, oh!
Swink finally has one, yeah.
I know.
A gas leak on that.
We got it in the dark ages here. Look, yay!
Took her a while to set in stone, but okay.
All right, let's move to the rate increase for the accountant. This was from Michelle Evie at our CPA. And the new rate will be $6.50 a month with an additional $350 charge at the year end for W2s, 1099s, and end-of-year reports.
It's $6.25 and $3.25? Something like that.
So, I want to have $25 a month and $25 for the year? And we haven't had this increase, what, three years ago she asked us for one?
23.
January 23rd. That's actually a pretty mild increase.
Yeah, compared to what everything else is. Does anyone have any objections or any more conversation?
Nope, there it is.
I motion we accept.
No, we either.
Right, yes.
I motion we accept the accountant's rate increase.
Second.
A motion by Robin and a second by Matt to accept the, uh, further motion of increasing funds for Michelle Evie to $6.50 per month and $3.50 at the end of the year for W2s, 1099s, and end-of-year reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, next on new business, uh, the Christmas party, Christmas is just around the corner apparently.
Not ready.
Anybody can be ready.
Yeah, I just heard it to get to me.
So we just wanna go from here to there, like always?
So, yeah, do you want to tell?
It's fine.
Yes, it's gonna be on the 10th, so.
Oh, okay.
That would be the Christmas party as well. From here to there.
Now, we keep the agenda short, we just do the budget.
Hopefully.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
I think the motion, we change the time.
Do you like the six again? Hey, come, um, come to, come in tomorrow and I'll give you the, you want me to just give you that paper? I can just do it right now. Yeah, let me do it right now. That way you'll have it, it's just right here, it's so simple to get.
Because we can change the time. And it's not so late. Because I'm not working those hours.
Oh, we do the meeting earlier, more time to party?
Just like, all the meeting, right, I'm assuming that's what you're thinking?
Just to change all the meetings.
How is the meeting time for everybody? Is seven good, six better? I think we went back and forth two or three times.
I like six better, but I have trouble getting to any of them. It doesn't matter if you put it at four, I'm gonna have trouble. Put it at 10, I'm gonna stay at work until five till 10. I'm gonna stay at work until two till seven, two till six, but I like six better because I'm home early.
I could, I could throw 6:30, 6 o'clock, just carry on.
No, 6:30 is an option.
It's 6:30.
6:30 to 7:30?
Yeah. 6:30.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm with Ray, I'm 6:30, that works for me.
It's another time, because like, forget, crap, there's a meeting and then I go up to like 5:30 and if I remember.
All the time, you have a moment?
No, we, we used to be at 6. Yeah. And then it switched to 7 and I still have issues trying to remember.
I had to text him, what time am I supposed to be at?
I had to ask her, what time is it? Forgot what day it was.
I text Chris, like, what time?
We're kind of like switching back, switching times again.
So the telephone just finds it.
So the compromise.
I'm so good with that.
The compromise we hear so far is 6:30, right in the middle.
I'm not sure, do we have to make a mention?
Uh, yes, I think we do for this one, just.
I motion we move the council meetings to the second Wednesday at 6:30 PM every month.
I second that.
I have a motion by Robin and a second by Amy.
I do say every month.
To change the meeting from 7:00 PM the second Wednesday of the month to 6:30 PM the second Wednesday of the month.
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, preferably.
All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
So next one is at 6:30.
So, yeah, December 10th will be at 6:30 PM.
I promise I won't change anything.
Yeah, that's it, you got your one change for the year.
I got my one change for the year, good.
Okay, with that, we are going to move into an executive session for a little while and then come back. Adrian, at the end, we're still gonna pass the ordinances for the budget, if you would like to come back for those, those will be in a little while.
All right.
You can read that and this paper, please, sir.
Just here in here?
Yep, just the top up here and the top.
Okay. All right, I move to go into executive session for conference with, let's break that one.
That one, just the same.
For discussion of personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402, 4F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or an elected official or personal, personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters, personnel to particular employees.
That's it, do we have a second to move into executive session?
A second.
I have a motion by Ray and a second by Robin to move into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
We'll be back after this executive session.